And we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Present.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Here.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Present.
Council President Pridgen?
Key.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Present.
Councilmember Wingo?
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Here.
Congress President?
Stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you, Council President. It's my joy and privilege to bring to the council for prayer today my good friend Pastor Bill Clark. We've been journeying together for probably a decade and a half now. He's been here pastor of New Bethel Community Church up next to University of Buffalo's downtown, not downtown, South campus, South campus for 23 years. His network that he oversees is Kingdom Rain International. And as I've walked with him, I've learned to learn from him. And as we've journeyed together, I think we've learned together well. So I invited him to be our guest indicator for today's session.
Thank you, Reverend Al, and to Council President and all the council members. God bless you. It's great to be with you again. This is one of my more joyous assignments. Thank you all. Just briefly, want to share with you a passage of scripture, and then I will pray and step aside. First Timothy, chapter number two, just a few of the verses, beginning with verse number one. And please hear my heart as I read this word to you. Please know that there are gatherings all over our city, men and women who are praying for you, praying for your wisdom, praying that God would lead you and guide you on behalf of our great city. First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and for all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God, our Savior. And I'll just stop reading there, and I would just say to you, council members, please know that we are praying for you, praying that God would would give you all that you need to accomplish the task before you. In a climate where political spirit would rather win than serve, and where the religious spirit would rather be right than love, we need leadership. And we are looking to you, but we're praying for you. We stand alongside you. We have your back. And so know that all over our city, men and women are praying for you as we are doing right now. Let's fall together. Father, we do thank you for this day. It is the day that you have made. We choose to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you for this hour. We thank you for this council. We thank you for our president and the council members. And now, Father, I pray that the eyes of their understanding would be open, that you would touch their 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 hearts and their minds. I pray that you would give them eyes to see, ears to hear, and hearts to perceive what you desire to do in our great city. And Lord, I pray that they would be willing and obedient to you, Lord Jesus. I pray for boldness. I pray for courage as they step forward, as they lead us forward. Father, I pray a fresh wind of heaven to fall upon each and every council member. This is our prayer, Lord, and we ask it now in the strong and mighty name of he who was and is and is to come, our Lord and our Savior Jesus Christ. We all said, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you both. Very, very appropriate words. Councilmembers, are there any memorials? Councilmember Wingo and Councilmember Galambeck?
I would ask the city of Buffalo to keep in their hearts and prayers the family of U.R. Bivens as she was one of the faithful members of the Antioch Baptist Church. She was laid to rest last. Please keep them lifted as they mourn her passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Galambeck?
Thank you, Mr. President. The family of Tim O'Brien lost him this past week. Former constituent of mine before the district shrunk in the last census. He's going to be very, very sorely missed by his family and his friends in the Elmwood Village area. Patricia Comstock passed away. Her she and her husband had been very active in the Club Forty Niners, which helps give children a little bit of hope during the Easter season. They do the Easter egg hunt and the chocolate for the kids and everything. Young man, Mac Daniel O'Hare, former Riverside resident. He was living down in Texas. His grandmother lives down the street from me, and his family, extended family, lives in the Riverside area. He is going to be sadly missed, as well as Scott Walters, Black Rock resident, who's going to be very sorely missed by his parents, his family, and his friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right, seeing and hearing no others. We pause in these chambers also remembering men and women who may have given their life for our country, for the freedom of our country, and the freedom of others since our last meeting. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. We have no special presentations that I'm aware of, so we will move through on a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon. The meetings of the stated meeting held on October 27, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have the late files before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files before you? Hearing no objections, we will hear the entire meeting, and I believe we are starting from the top Majority Leader.
Chairman, motion is to take item 49 out of order.
All right, we're getting to it. Motion is to take item 49. Keep going. Motion is to take item 49 out of order, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Discharge item 20-1299 from legislation.
Motion to discharge and adopt.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt. Now we'll go from the top.
Item number one, approve approval message CCP 20-1207, Pridgen Local Law Intro Number One, the duty to intervene.
Motion to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file, second by Councilmember Wyatt, and just so that the public will know, that does not mean we have, the law is done and it has been signed, and so that's why it's being received. And that item is being received and filed. Next item.
Item number two, 2021 Capital Budget Recommendations and 2022 to 2025 Capital Improvement Program Recommendations.
Motion to send to the committee of the whole.
Second by Councilmember Galambeck.
Item number three, Report of Sale, AD Andover.
This item, I defer to the council member.
Yeah, we're going to approve. Three and four.
Motion to approve items three, four, five, six, can you throw up?
Approve seven to council member.
And seven.
What about eight also or no?
460 Moselle in Maston.
Is that in Maston or is that in Fillmore?
It's in Maston, according to the.
Then yeah, approve that as well.
So approve all the way up to eight.
Right, second by Councilmember Wingo, Roca.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number nine, Report of Sale for Western New York Veterans Housing Coalition, including for 57 Howard.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number 10, Resiliency Services Contract.
Motion to approve items 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, can you throw up, 16, 17, and 18.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 19, Snow Plan 2020 to 2021.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Item number 20, Point Fire Captain?
Motion to send to Civil Service, items 20 through 21.
Second by President Pro temp Scanlon.
Was that through 21 or through 22, Majority Leader?
22.
Item number 23, Food Store License 671 Fillmore Avenue.
This is a late file. I defer to District Councilmember.
Mr. Chair, can you please send it to legislation?
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number 24, Secondhand Dealer 3077 Main.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 25, Appoint Inventory Clerk?
Motion to send to Civil Service.
Second by Councilmember Galambeck.
Item number 26, Corrected Salaries Schedule Executive Director?
Motion to send to Finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 27, Liquor License Notice 223 Allen?
Motion to receive and file items 27 and 28.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number 29, Appoint Assistant Legislative Aid Two?
Motion to that.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Item number 30, Concerns Regarding School Speed Zone Law?
Motion to send to Legislation, item 30 and 31.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 32, Support for Lead-Based Paint Abatement Legislation?
Motion to send to Legislation?
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number 33, Committee Meetings Transcriptions?
Motion to receive and file items 33 and 34.
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Item number 35, Concerning Segregation and Gifted Education?
Motion to send to Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number 36, November School Zone Comments from Public?
This item is open.
We just want to committee?
Yeah, committee, please.
Do you want to send it to CD or?
Uh, well, where's the legislation, I think, that we're. Yes, thank you.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 37, Special Use Permit 1264 Hurdle for Tavern and Outdoor Dining?
Motion to send to Legislation, City Planning Board.
Second by Councilmember Galambeck.
Submissions for Civil Service, number one, Appoint Camera Systems Administrator?
Motion is to approve items one, two, three, and including four.
Second by Majority Leader Rivera.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Committee on Finance, Permission to Purchase Tasers?
Chairman?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we didn't get the information that we were requesting as far as the additional tasers. Our our meeting went so long, we didn't get that, but I know that we need to do something. I know that people are known back and forth with tasers versus bolarat. Well, we know we want something less lethal, and I don't think anything is perfect, but a taser is definitely less lethal than a gun. And so I want to approve this, but I still want that answer regarding the additional tasers because I wasn't comfortable that, of course, we can't, we can't outfit the entire force, but to the extent that someone, an officer, can be on duty and go out to me and deal with a particular situation and not have a taser, does concern me. So I asked that we can purchase some additional ones just to make sure every battalion or whatever morning shift or evening shift has a taser. I know they're rotating them. Not every officer is going to have them, but at least the officers who are on duty, the patrol officers who are going to be going to these scenes, we would like to have a taser. So if they can get back to us and let us know about that, but I'm okay with approving it right now. So motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Councilmember Fair Little.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number six, Approve Revised Salary Schedule?
Motion to recommit.
Motion is to recommit, second by Councilmember Rivera.
Community Development, item number seven, Rename Columbus Park as Prospect Park?
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera, I apologize. I probably should have let you make that motion since that is a big deal, and I just looked down, and you are the sponsor of that. So you'll be the second on it if you if you'd like to switch Councilmember Wyatt to the third.
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to thank the Federation of Italian-Americans for all the work they did engaging the community, including Honorable Judge Frank Russo and many of the black club members that came together. It wasn't an easy decision to make, and I want to also thank Councilmember Farrelletto that was with us at our first meeting. It wasn't an easy decision to make on behalf of the the communities, but they did come together and they considered each other. And I want to thank the Italian-American community for that, and I'm honored to say that right there at Prospect Park, we'll have a monument dedicated to the Italian-American community of a family that's going to be placed right there where the Christopher Columbus statue was. So I want to thank all of the the members of the Italian-American Federation for their support on this. Thank you so much.
Councilman Rivera and Fear Little, you've done a tremendous job, and I agree with you. The Italian-American community has stepped up to the plate and at where many people thought that this would be a fight. It became a kind of operation in cooperation, and that says a lot about this city, but it also says a lot about you two as leaders who sat down and got this done with the Italian-American community and other communities. And Buffalo is probably rare in that, that this has been handled in such a way that it actually brought greater unity and not division. So congratulations to you both and to all who were involved with this. Next side?
Item number eight, Notice of Intention, Request to Renamed Columbus Park as Prospect Park? Motion to receive and file items eight and nine.
Second by Councilmember Rivera.
Legislation, item number 10, Food Store License 1799 Genesee?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second by Councilmember Nowakowski, who has filed conditions.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 11, Special Use Permit 549 West Utica for Tavern?
This item was sent without racking. It's in the Niagara District. Majority Leader?
Thank you very much, Chairman. We did have a community meeting yesterday. It'll resume, and motion is now to approve.
Approve, second by Councilmember Galambeck.
Sorry.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 12, Veto Message CCP 20-355 Wyatt Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 479.
This item was sent without recommendation and was supposed to be voted on today. Earlier today, the bill sponsor and the leadership of the council had tried to have had some communications with the administration about the about this specifically and about possibly making changes to this. At the request of the bill sponsor and leadership, this item is going to be tabled for today and voted on in a special session next Tuesday. Now, when this is in special session, the council will either vote to be up or down on the veto, and potentially at the special session next Tuesday, there will be an amended ordinance to be voted on by the council. No, there has been no amendment with, there has been no amendment filed by the council at this point. There has been no amendment filed by the mayor at this point. So right now, the plan is there will be a special session next Tuesday at 11:00 where this veto will be voted on, and there possibly will be something else filed that may have the support and signature of the mayor to be signed for immediate passage and go into effect immediately next week. We, nothing has been filed, so we don't know if that will happen or not. So that's why this item is being tabled today and voted on next Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's being recommitted, second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 13, Special Use Permit 726 Jefferson for Assembly?
Motion is to approve items 13 through 15.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 16, Special Use Permit 2505 Main for Tavern and Outdoor Dining?
Motion is to recommit?
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number 17, Food Store License 2577 Bailey?
Motion to approve with conditions?
Second by Councilmember Wyatt, who submitted those conditions.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Resolutions, item 38, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 415, Small Business Social Distancing Strategy?
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Fear Little.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galambeck?
Yes.
Councilmember Nowakowski?
Yeah.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number 39, Non-City of Buffalo Utility Company Shut-Off Notices?
This is a late file. I defer to Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This came about late last night when, and the reason is it's an urgent need is because an entire neighborhood was alerted last night after 4:30 that the power would be off in their neighborhood the next day. Our office did contact the power company and found that it was a private contractor who made that decision. The power company was not aware. The reason I'm asking for immediate passage of this is because our children are in are in school, and they're doing virtual learning, and many students are penalized if they are not on, regardless of what the reason is. Trust me, I've heard it myself. And so at the end of the day, this is kind of urgent because had it had they not contacted me late last night, the power would have been off in that area. Hundreds of students would not have been able to be in school, which they can least afford to be, and many people who work from home would not have been able to work. So this basically calls, gives a timeframe in which those companies, and I don't know, you know, we talk about, we always talk about this state law, federal law, and all that, and that's why it's going to our representatives also outside of Buffalo, but I think that the power company, the gas company, the water company, everybody has to realize the amount of people we have on at home right now, and especially our students. And I've been on this soapbox before to talk about ample notification. What we found out that this was not an emergency situation. This was about line maintenance in case of a storm. Line maintenance in case of a storm can happen on Saturday. It can happen on Sunday. It can happen on many days, but whatever day it happens on, it needs to happen with at least a 72-hour notice to the people so that they can move to a different location. For some families who have three, four children online, that it takes time to figure out where they're going to relocate to, that they can have internet access for all of them. So I would just ask for an immediate, what is this, an adoption on this? Am I right? Adoption? Resolution showing support, so for immediate adoption.
Motion for that.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 40, Right-to-Know Law in City of Buffalo?
This is another late file.
This could go to committee. It came out of discussion earlier today about Syracuse Right-to-Know Law, which we heard about, which requires a police officer to show some, to give a card to a person after they've stopped them and to immediately identify themselves. So I think we need to, we said we'd have discussion. I didn't want it to get lost in the sauce. So if you want to send it to police oversight or legislation, I would prefer it go to legislation since police oversight only meets quarterly, and that way we can move on this item. Waiting, of course, hopefully, the policy committee will meet and make this one of their agenda items for immediate movement. But just in case that does not happen, I would be before this council so that some movement can happen swiftly.
Motion to send to legislation.
Motion to send to legislation, second by Councilmember Nowakowski.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Councilmember Wyatt, Wingo? Councilmember Wingo? You're muted.
I'm sorry about that. Is it possible for me to be named on that resolution as well? I would like to make sure that I co-sponsor that with you.
Absolutely.
Me too.
Wyatt, Wingo, anyone else? Rivera? Alrighty, I didn't miss anybody. Nowakowski, Bowman. Right. Oh, is that a Galambeck? So is that almost all of us? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. We'll move that forward.
Item number 41, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter 242, Housing Standards?
Motion to send to Legislation, Items 41 through 45.
Mr. President, can I speak for a moment on this?
Absolutely. Second by Councilmember Nowakowski, who has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Buffalo has a lead from three of the highest zip codes with lead poisoning are found in the Niagara and in the Fillmore District. The two highest impacted codes are found in Broadway-Fillmore on the east side in my district. The two highest impact zip codes are found in Broadway, Fillmore, on the east side in my district. For many years, advocates have sought requirements for rental inspection similar to those in the city of Rochester. This legislation will provide proactive rental inspection for singles and doubles in the city of Buffalo. These inspections will focus on ensuring rental properties are free from health hazards, including deteriorating lead paint. Healthy, stable housing starts with lead-free housing. Council member Rivera and myself are co-sponsoring a series of reforms by introducing new legislation, amending current sections of our housing, uh, inspection standards as well as rental registration standards. These items will be heading to the committee on legislation next week where this body will discuss them further. This policy change will prevent lead poisoning and improving housing quality for all renters in the city of Buffalo. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Wyatt.
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, please add me. I think, um, I want to commend my colleagues on this, the great work they did in this legislation. When I saw it, I'm like, okay, I definitely have to be a part of that because I think we do need a robust, um, review process for rental properties. Um, I've gotten, I get many complaints from residents who are renting, um, from these, um, absentee landlords, these property managers who don't do a good job. They're just a figurehead for the landlord. Um, so we need to put more stringent standards in to make sure that people who are getting a dollar, um, make sure that they maintain their properties because you're getting rent and so you need to take that rent money. Um, and you need to make sure that that house or that apartment is in good order, in good condition. And many, many people have been taken advantage of. And so I definitely support this legislation and thank my colleagues for their efforts and putting forth to make sure that we're looking out for the citizens of city of Buffalo. Thank you.
I'd like to be added. Council member Revere.
Chairman, thank you very much. I just want to, I commend Eric from my office who has been involved in advocacy, uh, regarding lead poison. He took this on. Not only has he taken this on, he's worked with our water department with regards to lead. And as council member Noah Kowski says, uh, anybody that registers in the city of Buffalo has to demonstrate that their properties are lead free. We know, um, I'm sure that many of us know or have experienced problems with lead in properties or we've received complaints. So this is one other tool that we have to make sure that we are lead free and particularly those homes that are in substandard condition. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty.
Oh, no, Mr. Chair, can we revisit item sixteen and less, please?
Yeah, we'll come back at the end. So we, we put all the revisits at the end and we'll come back to it. Uh, uh, council chief of staff, just put down sixteen, make sure we come back. And anybody else, right at the end, I promise we'll revisit anything you need. Next item.
Item number forty-six, uh, recommendation Erie County Health Department hold individuals not restaurants responsible for face coverings.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by, uh, present pro temp Scanlon.
Mr. President.
Yes, council, uh, present pro temp, sorry.
Thank you, council president. As we know, the, uh, COVID pandemic has taken a tremendous toll on the business community. In particular, the restaurant industry has been hit hard. As was noted yesterday during our caucus meeting by some council members who've been out, uh, dining in some restaurants, we have noticed that these establishments have been taking the necessary precautions to keep both their staff and their patrons safe, whether it be the, the proper amount of distancing between tables, dividers, or other initiatives that they've taken, that have taken place in their establishments. However, despite all their efforts, I've heard, and I know some other people have heard from some operators who have received warnings or citations from the health department for as little as one patron maybe taking a mask off on their way to the bathroom or something of that nature. These restaurant operators feel it's unreasonable and I would tend to agree with them that they're being held responsible, um, possibly to the tune of a five-figure fine when they cannot possibly keep an eye on every single person all day long in their restaurants. You know, owners, managers of these restaurants are doing things all day long, they're in the front of the house, they're in the back of the house. So it's very difficult for them to keep an eye on everyone all, all day long. And I'd hate to see, uh, these establishments, which have already been harmed by this pandemic, harmed further by a large fine like that. Just because one customer forgets to put their mask on or quite frankly refuses to wear a mask. We have people in throughout our community who quite frankly refuse to wear them. And I know we talked about yesterday a terrible incident that happened in Western New York where someone actually lost their life over an argument resulting from these masks in a restaurant. Um, now, don't get me wrong, if the health department will walk into a restaurant and see a large group of people gathering, um, standing there talking, no face masks, I one hundred percent believe the responsibility in that situation falls on the restaurant. Um, but to hold them responsible, as I said, for someone maybe getting up and going to the bathroom, um, I'd hate to see that happening. So we've got this resolution, we're asking a representative from the health department to come to our community development meeting to have a conversation to determine what sort of, um, discretion they have when levying these fines. Um, the other thing we talked about yesterday was the increase in the numbers in the daily positivity rate of COVID throughout Western New York. And perhaps if there's, um, a perhaps there's, the onus is put on these individuals, um, there'll be a little more, a little bit more self-responsibility taking place. I saw the governor recently speaking about self-responsibility when it comes to face coverings and I couldn't agree with him more. Um, so again, hopefully, um, if we put the responsibility on these individuals, they will comply with these face covering, um, laws. And we can hopefully turn back the numbers in the, in a positive direction and hopefully it would aid with that, you know, as we move forward fighting this, this pandemic. So again, I look forward to a wonderful conversation with the health department at next week's, uh, community development committee.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Alright, next item.
Item number forty-seven, commissioner of deeds.
Motion to adopt items forty-seven through forty-nine.
Forty-seven to forty-nine, second by council member Wingo. End of the agenda, we go to the revisited items and the council member has requested item number sixteen out of legislation be reopened.
Revisit item sixteen.
Second by council member Wingo, this item is before us.
Special use permit twenty five oh five Maine for tavern and outdoor dining.
Items open.
Council member Wingo.
Alright, thank you. Just want to make sure that the community understands that we are, um, want to have a meeting with the, uh, applicant as well as with some of the surrounding businesses in the community to ensure that everyone is aware of what the plans are. Apparently, there was a walkthrough that was scheduled that I did not know of or was, uh, I guess it's claimed that I was invited to, but I never received invitation. So hopefully we'll have another opportunity to have a walkthrough, uh, as well as some of the neighboring businesses to ensure that, um, this item gets treated with the same diligence all of the other items get treated with as far as making sure the community is aware of what's happening. Uh, and again, this is one of those bordering uh, situations where Delaware district is right across the street. So we want to make sure that all residents that we will be meeting soon, there will be a community meeting as well. I'll be meeting with the applicant, I believe, Monday next week. And subsequent, that will be a community meeting of which we'll invite all interested parties from both Maston, uh, and Delaware. I'm hoping that Maston and, uh, Delaware district's offices can coordinate and make sure that that happens as relates to making sure that the community knows that this meeting is going to happen. Other than that, wanted to make sure that the community know that I'm not ignoring it, that we are taking care of it, it is being handled, and we are, we'll be meeting with the applicant. Thank you.
Alright, the motion stands. Council, um, I'm sorry. Sean? Any announcements?
That's it. Announcement of committee meetings. The following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com forward slash B F L O C C. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, November seventeenth at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance, following Civil Service, Tuesday, November seventeenth at ten AM. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, November seventeenth at one PM. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, November seventeenth at two PM. A special committees, Committee on Education, Tuesday, November seventeenth at eleven AM.
Council members, announcements, council member Bowman, and then council member Wyatt.
It's Sean, and that, uh, last announcement though, instead of education, it's going to be the special session, so we're gonna, um, reschedule that for this. Uh, there will be no education next Tuesday, uh, due to the special session.
Right.
Council member Bowman, if you still want to do it, it would be okay because that meeting shouldn't be long.
I, I think it's okay. I think we'll regroup and go for it next time. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council member Wyatt.
Thank you. Just want to invite the residents of the university district for our virtual e-district community meeting. Um, it's going to take place as, um, on, uh, uh, university district Facebook page at six PM tomorrow. Um, so again, if you want some updates regarding the university district and with, um, Chief Carmen Menza, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to let you know, uh, council member Bowman, um, about the virtual meeting. We're trying to make sure we do it every other month and I know you attend regularly, so I, my apologies for not um, notifying you, but if you want to let your residents know, uh, we'll have that on, at six PM on tomorrow, um, on the Buffalo University District page. Thank you.
Okay, we'll get it.
Okay.
Any others? Um, want to say happy birthday, ninetieth birthday to Edward Harmon, uh, the father of, uh, our human, the head of our human resources and also still serving on city boards and whoever, who knows how, uh, how many other things and up until our chambers close would often come to chambers, uh, to, to monitor, uh, the meetings. So we say happy ninetieth birthday to him. Anything else? Alright, majority leader.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, and second by council member Farrelletto.